Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Again, first of all, my sincere thanks on behalf of the committee to everyone for your patience. So that's clearly where we're in someone waiting to use our time, is it? As you've seen from this last meeting, we have a large number of applications to deal with today. So as I provide them to the committee, I advise everyone present, this may be an extremely long meeting, so we thank you for your patience, first of all. If you wish to address committee on any of the applications before us today, you'll mainly need to be on board, go into the front of the business, probably what you're trying to call them, okay? My colleague, the rear chamber, Vicky, has been taking names for the last half an hour or so. If your name isn't yet on that list, or you do think you want to speak, please raise your hand now and we'll take your name. The reason being for this is very simple: we do not accept questions from the floor of the chamber. We only take questions from members of the committee itself, and only from those who have invited forward to address committee. Equally, those who are forward to address committee from the list, you will allow up to three minutes to address committee on any matters. I would like to keep your comments, your advice to find issues, for the simple reason that those are all things to be taken into account when considering the transportation before this. We will flag up and indicate to you when we're close to exceeding their limits. The reason why we advise you today is quite simple because a lot of people present. Any more any questions at this point, please raise your hand, and I'll try and address them, which shall go through a few more procedural issues. First of all, fire alarm, there's no drill shed on today, left through London Sound, we've taken a caution notice by everyone present, and you can be safely escorted from the chamber following agreement, next exit ways, so you can safely pass out. The recording of filming proceedings is committed, it's committed, although we need to file it later to members of the committee and offices present, so not to members of the public, so just to make that over thirty to everyone present. Terms of days of proceedings come after the full round of the definite interest.
I'd like five particular points to cover both. What is not a formal objection, I'm going to ask you, sir, for the Nottinghamian? And apologies, I'll have to leave me to the work of the committee to set this up.
That's good.
Yes, there we go. My objection is on regarding the application of Landville to Little Bond, I suppose it's a common spot.
Councilwoman.
Yes, I objected on the item, I think it's item eight, Parkview, and also on the item that is the board council on Earl of Bresson.
Just convert that as a count to item sixteen of the general policy.
Yeah, that's it.
Items five and six on the agenda, I was speaking against both of them, I will just make one speech, which will cover the two items.
For purposes of clarity and for everyone present, given that items five and six go directly to the uncut focal stage, we will take both items together for convenience, given that many objections were raised, which is on both applications, so it's a good deal that it not matter, just for convenience. Terms of minutes of the last meeting, the last day, my next item, thirty minutes of the same course. Any comments?
Just on page seven, the reason given for what the conditions is not completed there, it says it is in the interest.
Thank you, let me all go back and we'll correct that, we'll share, and we continue that way as well. Subject to that condition, is anyone happy to go to seven minutes? Thank you. We have no urgent items of business to be said today, so while the chair signs off the thirty minutes, you will now move straight into today's business, which first item today will be item number four, Landville, that's the wrongs, East Press Road and Thomas Lane in Nottinghamshire.
Can I invite Mark Pennant to speak for the architects, please?
Morning Chair, morning committee. I'm Mark Pennant, from Embert Architects, where the project architect and the agent for Homeplus Limited, if you are seeking an outline approval to twenty-eight, or to local dwellings, and they keep where it is, land on Little Bond. I'm going to sign this morning, going to sign, I will translate to be there, and slide which is, we'll be there this morning. This is aerial photograph, the site is this area here, you can say, although a children's hospital, never completed but completing now, there are a number of adjacent dwellings that are accessed through the site. The site entrance is through a very small, very restricted overpass. Here you've got Tom's Lane, and also you'll notice that around this junction, you've got a cluster of larger buildings, next slide. They include the former Nottinghamshire Cup, Thomas Lee Caenham, the important to go to the Ethan Place Service, also the other end of Tom's Lane, with this junction of Brookside Avenue, there are a number of large, two and a half, three story flats, next slide. You have seen from the site visit today, the existing site is essentially brownfield previously developed plant, and is comprised of yards, buildings, cottages, and an existing suburb that fronts it onto Tom's Lane. That's the rear of Iger Farm, which still needs to be building, although it's worthy of note that the front of the site elevation of the listed elevations. It's also worth noting, and you may notice when you're there, there's a lot of thinking of the site, the levels drop as you traverse down Tom's Lane, next slide. One of the key issues of the site is the access on the express road, as you can see that, that is very bigger than a large plan. You certainly have refused wagons down there, or fire lights, which we feel puts the cost that are accessed through the site at greatest risk to this necessary. Next slide. We looked, the site of the conservation area, we're very aware of that, we, as part of the design process, have looked through the map history of the site, and you'll notice that there are a row of, this is from eighteen eighty, there are a row of cottages where we proposed block D, there are a row of terraces floating Tom's Lane, which where we proposed block A. The terrain of this bond changes at this point, and you can also see that there are informal courtyard, that's the chapel which is adjacent to the site. There's also an access on Tom's Lane, next slide. This is the site map, we adopted a number of drivers to produce the design, obviously we wanted to develop a brownfield and a lighted site with well-designed and high-quality lines, to design to suit key workers and benefit the local community. Prior to this room, was that access with a pedestrian living space, this is the former access, which was pedestrianized. This will improve access for occupants of the adjacent properties that were located down here, and also provide a much safer room in and out of the site. One of the key aspects for us was that dwellings to have private hand or sets, and as many dwellings and apartments have a dedicated front door, so whilst they are flats, these are hedges, and these are flats, I think all the tubes have got dedicated front door, and all the four have got some form of a back door. Next slide. We feel that this is a carefully considered residential plan, designed, as I say, to suit key workers, it includes twenty-eight of the bespoke and two bedroom dwellings, in combination of single story, two story, and two flats, having between four blocks across the site, to reflect the previous cultural informal courtyard. We've put in a new vehicle access in access on Tom's Lane, and converted the former site access on this press road, and pedestrian, and we can introduce it all the way around at the same time. Next slide. Thank you.
Thank you very much for arranging the site visit this morning, I think we all have the advantage of it. If I can ask the applicant, when I looked at your design drivers, clearly you met the objectives of Goulette's test plan, you met the objectives of providing front doors, which is not particularly a phenomenal concept in housing, but it doesn't mention compatibility with the historic nature of the conservation area, it doesn't mention conservation area at all as a design driver. If I can play devil's advocate, because I believe that's the best way to ease issues out, if I was looking at a totally brownfield site, no doubt about it, because I'm, I would find the board council very attractive, and I'd probably suggest to you such, my honour, to look at it. It's very sensible. But if I looked down the cottages and the frontages of the cottages on Nottinghamshire, it is totally different. If I looked, as we did this morning, along Tom's Lane, it's totally different to modernist style, completely historic, semi and cottages. So for a conservation area, why didn't you really design derived compatibility? And if I can make a question, I worked with a very good architect who looked at Denman Chapel in my own ward, and he produced a renovation of the church hall that kept the features and style and even building materials of all the surrounding buildings, and you wouldn't have known it wasn't historically, the footprint. Why had done something that's so contrasting modernist in a conservation area, and is, why wasn't that a design driver?
Well, very familiar belief, you should have been there. And what, what was, very clearly, what was the value to the parity was lost in it, and not always acceptable, and often different from what was intended. We've taken the terrain and the matting and the schedule, and introduced the informal courtyard, which obviously they can't, it's in our part, but it's a both are, and based around what was there. There is no, it's not like that, there's no strong, you've got a chapel, you've got Ivy Farm, you've got a series of townhouses, a terrace, shots with dwellings over in front, and you've got, I think it's twelve, small working cottages. To be used those, it's what's able to do, but is it the right thing to do? We've considered that it isn't of the place, of the time. With the intensity we bring, and we will, the last thing, we will also work with, but certainly we wouldn't want to give a repeating loss there, which what would you have been to a very, very different type of setting touch in the territory?
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. Can I invite councillor Harry Doyle to come forward to address the committee, please?
Thank you Chair, I'll keep me in for pretty brief, because I think it's, as the board consulates all three of us, we've made our objection quite clear, as has the Frank committee as well for agreeing to say this today, and I know Stephen's very keen, he wants to pass on the thanks. I'll keep a friendly reach, I just think, again, going from our site visit this morning, I hope you see the character and the nature of the area, that you visited our conservation area, and, you know, we've got, I don't remember what I'm saying, Lesley, local residents who will point out some of our objections in a moment, however, I would like to pick up on the fact that the architect drawing the presentation didn't actually show any pictures of the cottages in Little Bond. Those cottages, which frankly you've had a second this morning, are, again, part, it used to be the homes of Dizzyman apparently, and, you know, they are part of our local history, and, again, part of our conservation area, I just think on the access point, now speaking with local residents at Little Bond, they actually like the access point on these press road, for the reason that it's set back and away from the main access, so that they have their privacy, the new plans would indicate that the main vehicle access will be on front on the slave, it would be accessible to new developments and onto Little Bond, which would completely destroy any privacy the residents currently have in Little Bond. I would also mention also, highways issues in terms of the school on the road, we've probably got traffic issues popping in the mornings, but just very strongly object, and mentioned actually by councillor Asper, in terms of the design of this development, it has completely not fit into our area, and completely not fit into our conservation area, and I believe, and as speaking with local residents, we're pragmatic, absolutely pragmatic, and we see the need for development on site, however, it's the right development, and free apartment blocks as well as, to free properties as well, justice and in design that it currently has, is absolutely not the right development for this site, we actually to come back, we actually to ask the committee to reject this, and let's look further forward to the residents' full consultation for what is best for our area, thank you.
Are there any questions? Can I invite Lesley Power to come forward to address the committee, please?
I couldn't help but notice on the slides while we were waiting for the meeting to start the struck line, a little, a strong and growing city that was on theirs, and hoping and trusting that that's the feedback and the understanding that we have today. Thank you for visiting and taking the time this morning to Little Bond, I hope you went into the bungalow to see the large trees there that we pointed out in our last strip or weren't on the field survey, but where the bats might be roosting. Don't want to go over everything we said last time, but in the information pack attached to today's agenda relating to the matter of the bats, it's actually written, the bat report states that no evidence of roosting, bat use or presence was found, that's in your packs, but in exactly the same two thousand and eighteen bat report, in paragraph one D, it says, "A preliminary rooster assessment has not ruled out the reasonable likelihood of a roost being present." Now, that to me, those two statements supposedly taken from the same report are contradictory, and therefore we just believe that that matter needs sorting out urgently, just to identify the presence or not of such a roost, preventing the possibility of a wildlife crime being committed at the very least. Until that matter is reserved, it seems likely that permission is just at this time. Traffic and parking congestion is probably the biggest concern of local residents. In your report again, the failure to acknowledge the major local problems, such as the daily backlogs of the T junction of Roger Road and Tom's Lane, or up at the other end of Tom's Drive, suggests to us that the highways officer and the head of planning might have been working from the traffic assessment document, which is actually outdated information when they made their recommendations. Those reports are three years old, and don't take account of the new older hay development, and all the additional traffic and parking congestion that's happened in those three years. It seems unfair to us, you as a committee, to make a decision if that's the case and the information's out of date, so we wondered whether a new traffic assessment report could be obtained prior to the granting of any planning permission, to assess the potential impact of so many more residents' vehicles. Even the transport statement, which separate to the traffic assessment document, is even more out of date, and tells us itself that the personal injury accident under the data only goes up to two thousand and thirteen, so if I'm able to see how that can be relevant to this application. And then very finally, about visual immunity, and just to reinforce what's been said already, the comments of the head of planning suggest the proposals are compatible with the conservation area. I don't know if you've seen the photographs that we've submitted this morning, of a supermarket that's not very far away from here, we were struck by the similarities between the two designs, not that there's anything wrong with either of them, but they don't seem to be very compatible with our area, and so we believe that the developer could be asked to redesign the facts and keep the rest of the buildings on Tom's Lane, or as one neighbor suggested, why not the little dwelling houses on the front like they used to be, as the architect pointed out to us, and move the flats for the back main. In principle, we're not against the development at all, and I don't want you to think we are, but we know that, excuse me, could you now draw your remarks to the committee? I love your time, okay, I am doing. We know that you have a duty to protect the city's heritage, and we're simply asking that the baton traffic surveys were updated, and that the new proposals were considered to take account of these issues raised, and hopefully residents and the city council in this committee can be a really good example of partnership working. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you for your comments. Can I now invite our land officer to address the committee, please?
Thank you Chair, I'm John Hayes, I'm the control team leader for planning matters in the north of Liverpool. Chair, just a quick reminder, some housekeeping rules, this item has been reviewed before you, you referred it in order to undertake a side review, and that has taken place this morning. At that first meeting, there was an additional comment provided by Stephen Twigg MP, and they were captured in the minutes of that earlier meeting. In terms of some housekeeping matters, Chair, the proposal that is on page ten of your agenda papers, in the title box, is clearly being superseded by some abandoners, so that it is now for the erection, three two-story dwelling houses, and two, sorry, three blocks of flats, it's a collective block, so it's why it's described as two blocks in the report, giving a total of twenty-eight units again, which is being reflected in interpretation by the applicant. And then just lastly, Chair, there are some very minor ones needed to conditions, if you are indeed minded to grant planning permission this morning, so for example, conditions to the drawing ones and so on, if you see it coming. Chair, you've obviously had an opportunity to visit the site this morning, you've seen within the site, you've seen from the surrounding streets, you've had a full presentation from applicant this morning, and so you've had a full understanding of object issues that you and the planning committee need to take into account of. Those are set out all fully in your agenda papers, and I'll just take this through with various matters. So in terms of the principal development, we're satisfied this mixed-use area is suitable for a residential proposal, subject to cause to other planning issues, and those are the issues that I've set out in your agenda. So individually, the scale of the layout and impact on residential matters are all very important matters, and you've had a representation there from the councillor and another resident about the impact on the conservation area. Your officers are satisfied that notwithstanding this, the modern development with a design that isn't a copy of those nearby cottages and other surrounding buildings, we are satisfied that the proposals nominated are appropriate in terms of their size, their scale, their layout, there isn't a strong typology in this particular part of the Nottinghamshire conservation area, and we think that the overall design rationale that has been put forward for you is acceptable, and will not harm the conservation area, or indeed the surrounding nearby listed buildings, and that listed building again has been shown in the presentation as the Ivy Farm. In terms of highway matters, again, Chair, this has been carefully considered by colleagues in highways, they are satisfied both with the access arrangement on to Tom's Lane, and the amount of car parking, are satisfied that will have no harmful impact. And similarly, in terms of ecology, again, there have been reports submitted, and there is the report, before we go into some detail about that, just picking up on comments made by the final speaker, we have had comments back from our ecological consultants, and they are satisfied with the reports that have been submitted throughout this application process. You'll see from the agenda papers that this is an old application, it's been with the authority now for nearly two years, part of the reason for that is because they were required to undertake a full back survey, so sometimes the report will make reference to that roost potential, i.e. a building might have a potential that is then necessary to undertake an actual survey and identify whether there are bats there, and I think that's where that might create some misunderstanding. But that second survey, what's caused the delay, and they've undertaken a survey to identify whether there are any bats, that is being looked at by our external consultants, and they are happy with the conclusions of that report. So for all of you, Chair, I would recommend approval subject to legal agreements and the conditions, with a minor difference, I'd like to reference, thank you.
Are there any questions? So can I move that this recommendation, councillor Asher?
If you could go to some decent extent, everybody must move this. Now, I object, the objection on the basis this undermines the style and nature of the conservation area, it is a missed opportunity to develop compatible buildings, and is an over density for the site. I don't approve of the objections. I just, I don't have a design problem with the, can I speak to that mind if I may, very briefly? Can I just say, I think, we all know Nottinghamshire are very unique feature of the city, very historic part of the city, and it's not a low-value area, it's not an area where it would be difficult to attract investment, and I know I'm being told I shouldn't ask it, but I always ask myself, if we rejected this application, do we think something better could come forward? And I personally believe, because it is a high value area city, and because it's quite a reasonably sized site, I think it would be very easy, if I can get the chapel, the future drive, Denman Drive, to have compatible, similar building materials, similar style to keep the features of the area, I believe the development would do this. And I worry, if we set a standard of modernist buildings going here now, then we, the care of modernity, which is closed, we'll have another modernist building there, and then Tom's Lane will no longer be Tom's Lane as we know it. I think it is a missed opportunity, and we should, we should draw the line and say, yes, we do that, the layout was good, I gave a compliment to the developer, I have to say, I recognize he's developed a site heightline compatible, but I believe the style of the buildings, we saw in the photographs, are totally out of keeping with the front use or the cottage use at the back, or Tom's Lane at the front, and therefore it's a missed opportunity, and I beg members, let's have the courage to say, something better will be done.
So I'm asking your proposed amendments to refuse the application, the caster's rapport, that is on the basis that proposed development will be harmful to the character of the conservation area, and will constitute an over development of the application sites, are correct? Is that amendment seconded, please? Thank you, councillor. All those in favour of our caster's rapport, please very clearly. All those against the amendment? There being equality in voting, it now matters to the Chair to cast his deciding vote, Chair.
I'd like to vote against.
Councillor Rafferty's motion therefore falls. Councillor Wallace, I believe you're in the case, if you wish to move as well, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate that our argument is fundamental, I think the design is way too modern, it's not in keeping with the conservation area, and it's not in keeping with the cottages.
Just by, by, to be clear on this, councillor Wallace, do you wish to formally move objection to refuse the application, and if so, to be very clear on ground, you would do so?
Well, I just want to say that I want to oppose the application.
Can we recall that a second? From that sort of class of thinking to state, we'll reverse the stage and attempt Chair's original motion, which is to approve the application. Therefore, for everyone present, please now raise your hands if you would support the Chair's motion to approve the application. That's four in favour, all those against the Chair's motion? Chair, again, having quality voting, do you wish to cast your Chair's vote?
I wish to cast my vote that the recommendation be approved.
Thank you Chair, the fact that our proposal to the application is approved, on the determination of the Chair's casting vote, thank you.
Thank you, and can we now move on to agenda items five and six, which we are considering together, Liverpool Football Club and the Royal Albert Hall, and can I invite Sam Ryan to speak for the agents? And can I invite Sam Ryan to speak for the agents?
Okay, so can I just introduce the two items because the two make a way.
Certainly, if you're from Liverpool, I suppose I wasn't going to answer you for the objections, but you go first.
No, thank you, Chair. I will come back. I just wanted to say a couple of points at the beginning before we introduce the applications. To bring to members' attention, what we have here are two effectively linked applications. So the first is to use the stadium for an extended range of sporting events and screening of events. And the second application then is to, a similar application, to use the stadium for concerts. I think it's appropriate in the circumstances that the both applications are dealt with by the applicant and by the objectors as one single matter. But when you come to vote, maybe you will need to treat each one individually and they will do each one separately. In relation to two matters, what effect, what the effect would be if you are minded to grant is that the first application would allow just for the additional sporting events, that permission would then be further amended effectively by the second application, which is for the concerts. And you would then have the, again, if you're minded to grant, you would then have planning permission for the concerts together with the previously approved sporting events. So it's not either or, it's both as part of the second application. So just to make that clear, I would like to do the applications on school clarify further before we...
Thank you very much. Members, oh, sorry, you just moved on to the next slide, please. Members may be aware that when planning permission is granted to expand Liverpool Stadium, the conditions imposed controlling the use of the playing pitch, limiting it to a narrow range of football and rugby matches and screening of Liverpool Football Club first-team matches. That condition has been enforced since works commenced on expansion of the main stadium in December 2014. Prior to that date, there was no restriction on most of the stadium, and it is historically being used to host a range of other events. Next slide, please. As Mr Hayes has said, the club has 22 planning applications. The first is to extend the range of team sports on the pitch, for example, the gala games and American football, and to broaden the number of sports events that may be screened there. Those events are expected to take place during the football season, depending on the diary of the MLC first-team matches. And they are likely to have a similar attendance profile than at the existing football games, albeit the number of persons attending them is likely to be less than 54,000 capacity at the stadium present. For example, the recent Rugby League Four Nations final, which is permitted by the current consent, played to a crowd of 40,000. The second application seeks permission to host up to 10 concerts or other major events in any calendar year. This could include things such as combat sports or evangelical rallies, which have taken place there previously. They would only take place outside the football season and in a narrow window between mid-May and the end of July, sorry, the end of June. While planning permission is sought to host up to 10 such events, this is likely to represent an exceptional year. A review of similar venues shows that the average number of events in 2018 has been five. The capacity of the concerts or other events would depend on the configuration of the stadium. The application has been assessed on the basis of different layouts, which show the average capacity is around 50,000 for most types of events. Although exceptionally, an event may have a capacity of 60,000 where there is a central stage configuration, for example, boxing match. Next slide, please. The good clue on this map identifies the area where the club, and also I understand the city council, has consulted with local residents about the application proposals. The area was identified by the football club based upon technical assessments carried out to assess the potential impacts of the proposed development. Next slide, please. A newsletter was issued to more than 1,100 households on the day that the application was submitted to the council. It contains summary details of the proposals, when, what type of events is proposed, a summary of potential impacts, a link to the club's website where further information is available, including frequently asked questions, and an opportunity to provide feedback and comments. Following validation of the application, the website was updated to provide the planning application reference numbers, where the applications could be viewed in full the city council's website. It confirmed that the LSC website has been viewed over 1,200 times. The application for the concerts and special events was accompanied by a variety of detailed technical reports. And your officers have got confirmed that they have been reviewed by all the technical officers of the council and have agreed to various matters such as: noise from the events can be satisfactorily mitigated through a noise management plan. The transport effects of the proposed use can be effectively managed through an events transport management strategy, which is similar to that already agreed for match days. There will be no lighting, discernible lighting or rare quality effects as a result of the development. Notwithstanding, both the club and the environmental health manager are cognisant of local concerns regarding the idling of engines during events and to identify measures to address this. The use of the stadium to host a wider range of sports events and screenings would not differ significantly from the current use of the stadium, albeit it's previously stated attendance is likely to be less than for a first-team fixture. This map, which has been taken from the club's website, depicts the current matchday transport strategy for the stadium, and was prepared in consultation with the council officers following permission to expand the stadium. The plan has been instrumental in changing travel habits of many supporters attending matches at Anfield. Key features include pre-booked car parking, which is under control of the club, clear messaging on the website, and for ticket sales, there is no number of car parking for matches in the football match parking zone, creation of coachway lines in the area, liaison with bus operators to put on special bus services from the city centre, creation of taxiways, and a clean sign for a support group to the city centre. Next slide, please. The application identifies a wide range of documents that provide general in principle support to the proposals and to explore the use of Anfield Stadium. A number of those documents revert to the city's aspirations as a major music venue and identify the significant economic benefits that arise as a result of Liverpool being able to offer large capacity venue to compete with other cities in the region. Anfield is a unique venue of all, and the only one capable of creating that requirement. It has a capacity that is only four times that of the Enfield Arena. All of the technical consultees are satisfied that the impacts of the proposed developments are acceptable in planning terms and consistent with relevant development plan policies and technical standards subject to the imposition of appropriate planning conditions. As with other major events, both in the city and at other venues outside of Liverpool, it will be necessary to appoint the city council for event management licenses for each concert and special event of the stadium. This will require a detailed event management plan to be prepared for each event and setting out specific details and matters, including audience numbers, participation profile, impact and travel plans, et cetera, health and safety, noise management, which includes prior to, during, adapted to the event itself, and early ongoing collaboration with the local community also prior to, during, adapted to the event. The event management plan introduces an additional level of control to the city council over the whole of Liverpool through the imposition of planning conditions. It enables ongoing review and management to proceed with both in and outside the stadium to minimise local impacts. Finally, the club is also aware of the matters raised by local members and the local community, particularly in terms of antisocial behaviour and littering associated with matches, and the potential for those to spread to all the types of events at Anfield. It is currently liaising closely with the city council and local members to address those concerns, and has identified various measures such as increased liaison and cooperation with the police on matters of public decency, increased awareness in match programmes on the club's website regarding expectations of planned behaviour, more new and serious encroaching of those, permission of more portable, sorry, portals outside the stadium, increased number of car parking attendants to both enforce the matchday parking and facilitate local access on match days, and increased resources, political action in the local area. Such measures could also be included in the bespoke event management plans for concerts and special events. Thank you.
I have a question for councillor Harry Doyle for the...
Hi, thank you. There are some objections here. I'm looking at the objection from local councillors. And they mentioned towards the end, the issue of engagement with the community. Sort of a question would be, what engagement have you actually done with the local residents in terms of, one line says here, exclusive residents from participating in development of potential solutions to issues raised. Now, I actually thought up around the number of which is not, was not anywhere near where you can sell the ball to. And I remember match days and maybe the local traffic and parking. And those issues have been going on for a number of years, I believe, and particularly transport links as well. What engagements have the LSC had with the community to actually address these issues on match days? Obviously now going forward, it is approved on these events.
Okay. As part of the stadium expansion, there was a transport working group set up, which does include members of the local community as well as transport providers. So that actually resulted in the preparation of the event transport, sorry, the matchday transport strategy that I showed you some information of. So various measures relating to controlling car parking in the area, having local buses, putting taxiways and taxiways in the coachways, all of that started in consultation with that transport working group. And as I say, that does involve members of the community. In terms of the current application, I've identified as well, there was a detailed view slightly set out to all members of the community in the local community on the very day that the planning permission was submitted, with access to the club's website with questions and answers, and links to the council's own website. So actually it enabled members of the community to see very quickly what was being done. It's indeed on the very day the application was submitted, that mail-in was actually coincided to ensure that the people that arrived at the local residents' doorsteps very day that the application was submitted to the council.
Councillor Rafferty has a question.
How, are you engaged with the police at all, with the people, obviously? Sorry, has it been any engagement with the police regarding, you know, how these events are going to be pleased, the cost of it, will the council make a contribution towards that, or would it fall on the tax pay? If, if, if there's not been any pleasing kind of discussion going on with the application, could you tell me what I have to do?
The club are obviously always in direct communication with the, anyway, with regard to managing the events that take place at the stadium now. And with regard to licensing future events, then there is a requirement through all the measures in terms of health and safety, liaison with all the high agencies. So it is an ongoing process, and the club obviously have a direct communication with the police on a regular basis.
Thank you very much, Sam Ryan. Can I now invite councillor Ian Burn to address the committee? Followed by David Dowling and Billy Marriott.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for listening. I mean, I suppose on the issue on behalf of constituents, which we've had two, Chair, to ease the consultation, both Selton and Jay Corrus and councillor Fairland. So, first point, noise levels will be excessive, which has come across very strongly in the city. People are very concerned about the noise levels within the area. And obviously, it's been expressed by the noise management platform. For a lot of our people, a lot of pensioners, that's a bit odd for you if you want to know exactly what entails having a concert shopping, with regards to the public, a lot more clarity in that within the plan. The local residents are Mr Kay, and I'm a local resident myself, by the force of his way from Anfield, and with the close season to go there. It's a respite from May the 15th to August, people getting, well, in the area, Liverpool fans, residents getting relief from...